All right, I'd like to call the word the Mastoni Planning Commission meeting for October 17th, 2022. Can you get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Shavon?
Here.
Mr. Wallimer?
Here.
Mr. Katz?
Here.
And Mr. Rapids is asked.
First item is approval of the September 19th, 2022 meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments or directions? Anyone want to make a motion?
I wasn't here. I'll make a motion.
All right, sir.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Standing, all right. First agenda item is additional use permit to construct self-storage units in the G1 district. This is a very irrelevant. Someone was here for that. Yeah, oh, you got, come on up. Get your names.
My name is Steve Pressium, we're the owner of the property.
I'm Frank Malanti, this is the project manager chief.
Okay. To Francis, uh, just to get everything just go in the right direction. Want to talk about just the conditional use first. Take over the comments regarding that.
Yeah, I think you should do that and take action on that. Because without it, you wouldn't be able to have a plan approval. I didn't go into the plan approval session.
Well, if you guys would just wanna, I guess we've been here before. Talked to you before. If you want to go over any significant things that changed, then we'll get Mr. Francis's comments, particularly regarding the conditional use in that plan.
So, okay. Just a basic overview of self-storage in the general industrial district. It's 74,700 square feet of storage space, which was 20,000 square feet last time I was here. Reason being, I increased the amount of climate-controlled storage. I combined a couple of buildings, gained some square footage. 20,000 square foot will be climate-controlled, which is not found anywhere else in the city. There'd be eight total buildings. The nearest building is 500 feet from the nearest residential house. There'll be approximately 450 individual storage units. And you know, office in the front, 900 square foot office, which will be staffed. A-class facility, video surveillance, perimeter, we told the best to engage it. And your basic self-storage facility with residents can store their items and small businesses can store their items within this.
Right. Francis, would you like to talk about the conditional use?
Sure, I have a few comments on my October 14th report specifically to the conditional zoning certificate. Section 117118B requires the zoning certificate, and that's of course pursuant to 113704, the code, with regard to the self-storage facilities. The applicant touched on the 500 feet, and so that is something the code requires under 117118C, 1,000 feet of separation, but the planning commission can approve a smaller setback, nothing less than 500 feet. So they're meeting the minimum standard. And with regard to that, I just had a few comments. I think generally, the 500 feet is acceptable, but I did ask that a few more trees be added. So where I can kind of show you here, you're showing the trees here. I just suggested you wrap the same eastern pines here and then behind it, why, German, not to scale. Those are deciduous trees, some sort of like pin oak or celebration maple. I think that's just added buffer and I think just good to add to the site. So as part of the conditional zoning certificate, I would recommend that that stipulation be added. And then the code does require essentially like a lease agreement between the city or the fire department to provide inspections up to three times a year. I think they probably already have the ability to do inspections, but the code does require it. They get probably something that's fairly simple that the law department could draft up that just gives the fire department right of entry three times a year for inspection purposes. I don't know that there's any fee, but that can be discussed with the city. And then the last thing, and I said it, it's on sheet SP2, which is the overlay sheet. The plan does state there's no outdoor storage, but just to further ensure, I would add that as a stipulation to the conditional zoning certificate as well. With that, I'd recommend approval subject to those few items.
Anybody else have anything regarding conditional?
Yeah.
For Ohio Fire Code, square footage that you're requiring, you're asking, it requires a secondary driveway for emergency access?
Okay.
And your 300 feet for your hydrant spacing?
Okay, please. Secondary driveway. I don't, I don't see anywhere I can put that except coming through the neighborhood property. I have a very small frontage on the very road. Is it that way? Nothing.
I understand. For Ohio Code.
My neighbor to the south has one entrance. They're bigger than I am.
I'm not sure how big they are.
Anywhere I can put a driveway, is there a suggestion or?
Um. The southwest corner? I mean, the way you have it right there, one of your layouts, you got the hydrants on the outside of the fence. We're not going to come inside and go back out to get to the hydrants. So save a little bit of pipe, bring them in, protect them. Because if you go, if you come in with one truck and you're using the one hydrant, it sets off the access to most of the other, the rest of the facility. So there's no way once we pull in, we'd be able to get somebody else around if we need to, engine's bumper.
And when Rich, you're, you're coming from the 2017 Fire Code.
2017.
Any previous building would have been built under a different version of the Fire Code. And the, and just for record, 2013, I believe, Ohio adopted a version of the Fire Code that was modeled after the International Code Council Code as opposed to the homegrown code. So depending upon the age of the building, it could have been a very, very dated version of the Ohio Fire Code. I just wanted that because that's something new, so.
Right, and it's an ordinance, the the footage for the hydrants, that's a city ordinance.
So the hydrants are okay. I just, I have two hydrants on the plan.
I, I didn't plan it out. You got 300 feet of coverage all the way to the north corner?
Yes, two hydrants.
Okay. Okay. I mean, if there's a way you can wire it off in front of the fence, on the street side of the fence going to the left, pop out in the back parking lot.
Over the square footage that requires two driveways.
It's seven, you're just over it.
70,000.
I can, I can get that information to you tomorrow. I don't have it, I don't have the exact number written down.
Reduce some square footage, so. What's your total? 74,700.
He has a nice, seven was the.
Yeah, I don't have to mention, I'm sorry. First I heard that. You know, there's looking at the site, there's nowhere I can put a driveway in. I'm surrounded by.
You can barely get one.
Yeah, right.
We got one squeezed and there's nowhere else. I mean, it's a hardship of the site, actually. It's not even front is just what it is and the site is where it's at. Not only you know it's a well come off of somebody else's property, but yeah, and there's so much elevation difference. Yeah, that's a lot that you could make.
I think you did in New York.
I guess Mr. Francis, is that more of a, yeah, the site plan, so.
Yeah, it's not, not something that you could stipulate to the use.
Okay.
But something at the site, stuff, bump in planning discussion. If it's 70,000, just simply, it seems like a lot easier.
Yeah, spread them down.
Get your card, I can. I'm in class tomorrow, but I will get that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Mr. Francis, basically there's three things you're talking about. Landscaping, additional landscaping, lease agreement for the fire inspection. And then just to kind of restate it again, no outdoor storage, just to keep that front center. Does anybody else have any thoughts on this? Or conditional zoning certificates out? All right, then I'll make a motion to be approved, the conditional, oh, sorry, Joe, were you gonna say something? I'm sorry.
You said a conditional zoning certificate approval. That'd be us, it's a conditional zoning.
I'm thinking it should be important, sorry.
No, conditional uses require conditional zoning certificates. It's from the planning commission. Variances, I think, is maybe what you're thinking of, Mr. Shavon. Those go to the board of zoning appeals, which is not applicable in this case.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional zoning certificate with following stipulations. The additional landscaping, as noted in Mr. Francis's memo. A lease agreement to allow the fire department to do their inspections. Notation that there's, there will be no outdoor storage. And this is all predicated on the fact that we're allowing 500-foot setbacks instead of the 1,000-foot setback from residential. So. Got all that? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that? All in favors?
Aye.
All right, so also found that it's on plans, and we'll start with, Mr. Francis again. Over the rest of yours.
Sure. So as the applicant stated, they made some modifications. The overall square footage for the storage buildings went, went up a little bit. It's actually 73,781. 70, 73,781, it's 11 square feet less, it's 73,770, just to, I added it up about six times. Even created a little table because I didn't want to be, so 11 square feet's important, but you're getting closer to the fire requirement then. And then also reduce the office of our amount down to 930 square feet from the previous little over 2,000 square feet. So no issue there with the use approved. And some of the site development issues, I think we just need to talk through. Looks like there's a wetland impact, maybe building G impacts.
104 acres, yeah.
I don't know, do you, are you required of any sort of a permit for that, jurisdictional permit?
Our, has already been out to do their visit. It's just in the process of being permitted.
Okay, and so obviously any approval of the city issues would be contingent on getting that. If you didn't get it, you have to come back because that building would be impacted essentially. And then we, we talked a little bit about landscaping and I sort of focused my landscaping review because of the difficulty of the terrain and the easements that impact the property. I kind of focused on the property to the north that sits in Twinsburg Township, vacant land. And then along the frontage. And on the frontage side, I had requested some, a couple of trees as well on the, at the entrance. So on either side of the drive entrance, I had asked for two deciduous trees. You could do ornamentals if you wanted, if you were concerned about the height. I mean, pin oaks are good trees to do there because they have a lower base, they have a higher base for, for their leaves, but that's up to you.
Have a question, can I wait till you're done there?
Sure, go ahead.
There's a couple, probably three large pine trees existing on the left side of the driveway.
I saw those.
Are you proposing the, the trees in front of those pine trees?
Not to scale, right where those two red stars are, somewhere right at your entrance, just to sort of demarcate. You're coming into this really nice location. And then I, I would switch out your boxwoods and again, because you're trying to screen that, that parking park to be screening, screened by code. I'd switch out those boxwoods and I'd mix in like burning bushes or something. It's a little more dense, provides your own coverage, maybe not color your own, but boxwoods don't either. But they give more just screening. So that was, that was part of my comments on the screening for the landscaping. And then the Twinsburg Township, you know, you, you probably could, I don't know how much spade, you have grass there. I mean, you could do some buffering, I think. I just don't know what they're planned and I'd hate to not take that into consideration as you.
I've talked to the township manager, I've also spoken to the owner of that property. It is zoned industrial, township and the owner are both pursuing the industrial development. That makes a difference.
Yeah, I think it does.
Industrial, industrial.
Yeah, I think it does. If there's no, again, I didn't know. And so if there's not residential planned in the city, you can easily confirm that, then probably not necessary to have additional buffering, certainly to another non-residential use.
So the elevation there, I'm not sure if you realize that from the grading plan where they're sitting way higher than we are, so.
Yeah.
We'll be below them.
Yep. But I think it's probably a moot point if they're non-residentially zoned.
Yeah. Map here, that's all industrial there.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, you can submit that into the record.
Okay.
Item number two on, on this part of the report talks about the, I mentioned this last time, that drive aisle, so you're, you're coming in, it quickly transitions into one way at the south edge and now what's identified as building B. And now there's a barrier-free parking space that's been introduced. That previously, I don't think was there, that space. I think it's going to be difficult. At first, I don't, I don't know what the point of that barrier-free space is, other than complying. Yeah, ADA requirements maybe, but if you were to put a space for ADA, I would say you'd want to put it in your main parking lot as opposed to that. I think you should just eliminate that space altogether. I think you could make up your parking, because you are deficient currently just by one space. The map doesn't weigh that up, but I don't think that's a significant issue because the drive aisle, you have this drive aisles, you know, it's a little funky. You've got 30 feet up to almost 27.
Yeah.
Back down to 22, 24. I think, I don't know if you look at just, if you stay consistent, I think 22 feet maybe.
In the, the top and bottom, I'll make those consistent, but the 30's there to make sure the fire trucks can get around a little easier between the parking lot and the buildings. That's why that one's 30, whereas the other one further away, 22 is just going to be cars going around.
Not necessarily.
That's true. I mean, if you want it 30, we'll push the curb out, that's not a problem at all. I just don't think that that was as, as necessary to get the fire truck around.
We design a lot of two-way drive aisles in the city at 22 feet. And fire trucks go right through them just fine. I don't, I think they're particularly wider than a regular truck. I mean, what do they, high line or?
We do have a zero-foot radius though on the corner of the buildings, that's the problem, so.
So you're, yeah, your turning movement may be an issue and I don't know if you put it into auto turn to determine, you know, to put the template in to see if it, I don't know that, so just a suggestion.
30, 30 words, but I'll, I'll look at it and run it again with something near or, and also make it more symmetrical as far as these. But I appreciate that because that will give us our space there.
Yeah.
I saw the comment about the landscape tiles as well.
Yeah, and if you can landscape, I know the snowplowers aren't, they aren't going to like that, but
Right.
They deal with it all over northeast Ohio and generally the Midwest.
And this parking lot in general, we're wondering just procedure-wise, if we could ask the question. So we're going for a code-compliant plan here to get your base approval. And then after we get that, we'll be permitted to go to BZA to see if we can get rid of the parking lot.
You can go now, you can go for a direct variance, you don't need to be denied, you can go do that now. But if you want to get approved with the code compliant, that's acceptable as well.
Because I, we have this parking lot there. This is only there because the code requires it, nobody is going to park there.
Yeah, and I, I don't think anyone here is going to say, oh, we love more hard space and we want a bigger parking lot.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think if you can get rid of it from a variance standpoint, I, I mean, I don't see an issue with that. I mean, and the commission doesn't typically opine on that, but generally, they like to try to park less than park more. Again, the code requires it, so.
And if BZA denies the variance, we're still going to go back to a code-compliant plan, correct?
Yeah, you're approved, if you get approved with this, that's right, and you wouldn't have to.
Yeah, just, we could try to get the parking lot removed, and if not, then we'll build it.
Yeah.
So, okay, I just want to make sure of that. That's the problem.
So we talked about number two with that barrier-free space. We already talked about the outdoor storage, maybe we'll reflect that. I'm a little confused about the chain-linked fence. Is it going around the whole property? It doesn't look like it is.
It's just from the northeast there, the corner of building H all the way down to building D.
Yeah.
Then the buildings are kind of the perimeter fence.
Yeah. So it just says around the property, so that's why I asked the question on the site plan. So it's just a verbiage issue, you just clean it up. I don't think there's anything that says you have to put it around the property, but frankly, it's not attractive, so.
Right.
Now, you weren't planning on doing like razor wire or barbed wire or anything?
No.
It's good, so that was just a concern I had. And then you will, for your future plans, submit a cross-section view of what you're proposing a fence and how it gets constructed. We talked about number three already, which is the drive aisle, so we don't need to rehash that. We talked about the screening of the yards. So the township issues, sort of put the rest, just put that in the record and then add that additional landscaping, the trees up in the front and just show those on a future plan, so whatever they are and then, you know, cross-section of that as well. And then your lighting right up at your entrance, your lighting level gets a little high and it's principally because there's a light right there. Either you can relocate that light, shield it differently, do something else, but it's just a little in the, you know, it's a little, little too lit up.
Okay.
I think it gets up to like three or so foot candles.
That's something I can have up there.
You want to be at about a half a foot candle at that property line. It shouldn't be a problem to achieve.
Even at the entrance, you think so?
Really? Well, technically.
Lit up, not, half foot candle's kind of dim.
Yeah, but you got plenty of lighting on your, on your whole site.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it's read adjacent to the three-way and so, you know, I don't think, I'm sorry, adjacent to. Yeah, yeah. So I do, I don't think it's a problem reducing it down. Yeah, I mean, you're in an industrial area, but
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a big advocate of trying to keep lighting levels lower. I don't think anybody's going to have a hard time finding your site. I mean, it'll be lit up that quickly to have a foot candle.
Sure.
It's probably just as easy to, again, to shield it differently or change the position of the light.
Okay.
And then just the minor things, again, the, the table just gets cleaned up for the future plan submitter with the correct square footage. And in architecture, I think Yeah, so we'd want to have the, the city's design consultant look at the architecture. I mean, look, there are many storage or there are storage facilities. It's not a super big glam and glitz with them, but I do think generally, we don't allow the metal that's being proposed, so.
Like I could say, I know the proposed thing shows all the metal cladding, but I would put stone or brick veneer on the front around the office where you can see it from the road, that's, that's the plan.
Yeah, I don't know how you get around that metal issue, the architectural standards don't allow it. You know, you can get around it by doing like an architectural vinyl, but I don't know if you'd want to do that. You could do some sort of a fiber cement board, which adds cost, but I'd, I'd suggest that, you know, Pam, take a look at it and work with me on how to achieve that.
Would that be the whole thing or just the sub-sides visible to the street?
Well, technically, this, it's a standard that applies to all the buildings. So I would encourage you to talk, you know, talk to Pam and try to work through how that plays out on the architecture. You don't have to decide it tonight, obviously, but I do think she needs to look at it and there's a requirement under the code to her citywide architectural standards.
So no metal?
And no metal.
The, the other storage facility was approved last year, all metal.
Which one?
Space place on Freeway Drive. In the same, same zoning district.
Yeah. I'm not sure, maybe they got variance? I don't know.
You'll all look at it.
Yeah, take a look at it. And that's, that's all I have for my comments.
Do you need me to change the tapering down to one drive, one, one way? Because the reason it's so narrow there is because there's, everybody's going in one direction there except for like where it tapers, you've got a funnel, there's no other place to go there. So the guy that's going to the north is going to go that way. The guy that's coming from the west is either going to go back around or out. So it doesn't seem to me that it, I, I understand if it were a road or you're traveling. We've got a stop bar there, so they, they do have to stop. Is that, do you need that changed or?
Oh, is that what that is? Is that reflected as a stop bar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think probably the stop bar might be adequate then, I didn't realize that's what that is.
Yeah, I'll put the, the, before it stopped there as well, that make it more clear.
Yeah, I just, I didn't see it, and if it's a symbol on there, I apologize. Now, Mr. Westbrook, do you have any thoughts on that? Probably a stop bar is probably adequate.
Yeah, I would think so. Sir, do you need?
I have nothing to add.
Second insurance. You can hook them up with the numbers or something. Yeah, I just, I got a little bit, I'm, 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 building code stipulates it also, but I know it's in the Fire Code.
That's 2017 Ohio Fire Code.
So I guess a question from the commission.
No, I don't have one.
I guess I, I think what Mr. Francis was recommending, that was a preliminary plan approval. You know, he's got a bunch of items that he went over. Obviously, landscaping, the parking, the drag aisles, to various other things that I think would need to be addressed to and hopefully can be dealt with, with the fire issue for final plan approval. But I think, you know, if we go ahead.
The engineer, I'm not here, I have no comments from him, although I could get something.
He, he may have some more technical comments for you, when, you know, specifically if he does plans approval. I, I would, I don't think anything, he wouldn't have anything probably as it relates to this approval here. That's something different.
No, I agree, we'll, we'll be waiting for the next round of plans.
I think he might have provided something early on at his last turn, or last time, yeah.
So. But yes, I probably won't say anything until he's sure it's a final plan, if there's something really critical. Or, you know, when you get some of the detailed review, which approves. So if you guys are okay with the preliminary plan approval subject to Mr. Francis's comments, the fire department comments that need to be worked out. Anything specific, do we need to mention those kind of things or is just?
No, I think, yeah, just referencing, I, I did have another question, if that's okay. I meant to, I meant to just ask, what's the, just north of building B, proposed fire department access area for rear building? Is that, is the intent to try to provide the fire department their full access?
Yeah. Was that a good access from the? Was that a good access from the road of, as well?
But isn't that one, the north side, isn't that the one that's got the?
The north.
The embankment to it?
Yeah, it's, it's high behind it. Yep.
Okay.
It slopes down to it. Um, and there's a retaining wall on the backside of the building is a retaining wall.
Okay, so there's.
But it'll be.
Behind. It'll be straight up. Like, I, I've seen the picture. It'll be straight up to where, you know, you got that much of the building sticking up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, uh, there's no, there's, there's grade above the building in the back, so it's, it's, would it be fireproof from the grid? Since it's, it's earth behind it, um, so there's no access behind. There's just access from the front of it, since the grade is higher in the back. That make sense?
How do you get, how do you get, I'm just confused. How do you get it? Isn't that, that's just an unpaved easement, right? How do you get?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're talking about the north side of the, uh, building H. So on the east side of building, uh, A and B is the easement that you can, um. That we're proposing access through the gates between the buildings. Like between building, uh, H and building B, on the right side, northeast corner there, we have a, a gate for, uh, fire access. And then between building B and building A, uh, there's a gate there as well.
My thought was the fire truck would park there. Uh, I think last time I was here, we said the fire hose would be long. Hundred fifty feet from that gate would reach the backside of the building. If needed, and if you access on each of those spaces there, you can cover the whole backside of the building. With a hundred fifty, fifty feet of fire hose. Last time I was here, that space was not there. I cut the building in two. That way there's access there.
How do you get those plans?
Hmm, yeah, I did, I'm only asking the question. I didn't realize the fire department was okay with non-paved access, so.
Well.
So we're here, here, here and here to access back here. They're suggesting you come through here and here with your hose to bring it back here as opposed to having. I don't know what your, your requirements are. They just popped in there and said, hmm, that doesn't seem to make sense to me.
I've seen that, that was there. Building H was one of them. Yeah, there. That one there, it's the market firing for wheelchair access somewhere. I'm trying to work, yeah, right there. As long as, you know, the hydrants are inside and protected, not outside the fence. Not on a dead end where we, following snow lines.
So the hydrants are good where they're at with the fence out there, essentially.
No, not necessarily. I'd rather have, I would rather see them at the front of the building.
Okay.
So we don't have to look behind the building to find them.
Okay.
And nobody else can park in front of them. And you can't pile snow on top of them. Um, in the, in the parking lot area, whether it stays or not, if you can put one, like in a protected island. That would be sufficient from that end. And your, your two largest buildings, that's all inside access, right?
It's gonna be, um, the perimeter will be not here access.
Okay.
Inside.
All right, have both.
Always the inside.
Single, single level, two levels?
Single level.
Single?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, you have a discussion? No. Then, uh. I'll make a motion for preliminary plan approval, um, subject to, uh, uh, Thomas from City Planner and City Fire Inspector. Do you have a second?
So I'll second that.
All right, we're discussing it then. All in favor?
I agree.
Hopefully, with some of these little details. Mr. Frost, uh, that narrow or that tapering area, I think that'd be a good location to put, uh, a fire hydrant. So I was going to curve that in instead of keep that a, a straight, uh, triangle access there, so that we're going to lose that space there. Um, to give it anything for anyone. So you're okay with that being curved instead of a straight?
Yeah, just show detail when we're done.
Okay. We have four seconds.
I won't ask for more landscape.
Landscape everywhere around there, woods at the north, trees a little west side. It's okay. That's, that's good. How's Brad? Thank you.
And all, we all night.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
For the scene, I'm screening.
I will. Yeah, I will get together.
Next is, uh. Conditional use permit, uh.
Sorry.
For trailer sales in the G1 industrial districts. Is someone here for that?
Yes, sir.
Yes. All right.
Let's see.
Yeah. How are you? Was everyone doing? Yeah, I think it's, uh, your name is for records?
Andrew Startzenbacher.
Spark. He has to. I'm sorry, can you spell that for me?
Sure, that's a, that's a tough one. Uh, might take the rest of the night. Thank you. Sure. Mark N.H.E.N.I.N.G. Thank you.
Okay, so first is the, the conditional. Why don't you go ahead since this is the person you guys are here, uh, give an overview of what they're planning and then.
Good plan with all. But, uh. Approximately thirty thousand square foot, currently located in, uh, village. By mile down the road, I'm kind of slowing a little bit, uh, that's. Trailer sales, parts and service. We believe we fit under the G1 industrial description. Section, set, uh, eleven sixty-nine point, point zero four. Um, said, uh, B, B three, section D. Other, other automobile services deemed similar by the planning commission. These by our tax, taxes that way. Regulative that way by the federal government and by state of the title, so. You carry ND dealer license with state of the title, dealer license, so. We're, we're considered the automobile services by state of the title. So in essence, you know, we're, we're here just to. Help you guys rule out on a preliminary basis whether you guys deem this similar. So that, you know, we can proceed with a more detailed set of drawings. This is a very conceptual idea of what we're proposing. And again, we didn't want to kind of go down the path too far if we didn't, uh, fall under the, uh, auspices of what you deemed appropriate. To the G1 zoning.
Okay. Okay. Um. Want to go over your thoughts on this department?
Sure, yeah, I, um, so I think the zoning administrator made a determination under eleven sixty-nine oh four, the general industrial district, um. And it references the eleven sixty-nine oh four C conditional uses retail businesses, which generally sell a single product line. Requiring a large floor area for the product or service sold. Our businesses occupying or intending to occupy an existing industrial business, in, in, in existing industrial building. Do not generally need to associate for marketing purposes with other retail businesses or shopping plaza, which I, I think that's accurate here. Um, and are determined by the planning commission to be compatible with other uses in the district. But I, I think I, um, I arrived to the same spot that I think it's a use that's allowed in this district. I, I don't think it's conditionally permitted. I think it's a permitted use. Um, and certainly if the applicant has a certificate that shows that they're an automobile service related business, which I think you may have included that.
We've spent that with the, uh, top two different years.
Yep.
You have a license or ND.
Yeah, and. And the, um, zoning administrator clearly has not taken an adverse position against the use. Um, I think it's acceptable under, under D that the, D and quite frankly, A, it's similar to A as well in auto sales. That, that it be a permitted use and move forward, and you don't need to issue a conditional zoning certificate. Because you're going to get to the same, you're going to get to the same endpoint, and I don't know what conditions you'd put on this particular use. I mean, it's not going to impact anybody negatively. Hours of operation are probably pretty standard business hours, Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday, or Saturday H two.
Yeah, so I think.
Yeah, Black Friday sales starting is made or anything.
I know. We actually like your holidays well, so.
So the commission's okay with that. Again, obviously, the administrator did not take an adverse position. It's probably fine to do it that way.
Are you okay with it, sir? Are you fine with that? Yes, okay. Okay, so I think, sorry, you guys could be there, and I don't think anybody has a reproach.
No, no, no.
Um, I guess, could you give a little overview of, so. How does the, the site work? Uh, you know, where your trailers are in the back? There's well display area up front, is it?
This is the display area. This is conceptual right now. We haven't done even a weather study yet.
Okay.
Weather study that, um, is outdated, so we need to update that weather study. Um, conceptual walkthrough on the weather study, so we're not sure what's changing here. Uh, but yes, of course, we abide by the screening guidelines of the city, which are our screening guidelines. We'd, we'd ask for a trailer display up front here, possibly along the drive, uh, with trailers on the appropriate setback. As deemed by the city council.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you see Mr. Francis's comments that if you want to display your trailers close to the road, you can't? Did, did you read that? It had to be three hundred feet away or from the.
So even though this is a freeway and it's not adjacent.
Yeah, I, I, I brought that up, but, uh, I, I don't know. It's, it's in the rules, but I, I'm not sure. Is that going to work for you or do you need a variance or something?
Well, we're not to that point. We're concerned, are you guys going to allow us to develop this property?
Yeah.
We didn't want it to like trailer sit.
We threw a whole bunch of, spent a lot of money if you guys markets, deem this to the G1 district. Right, we're going to make sure before we move forward. That's pretty much that. So one of the reasons why we're here. So we, we are going to come up with some more detailed plans and able to answer those questions. Possibly, you know, yeah, there's a variance, but we could possibly get a variance. We'd ask for it at that time to see what the guys want to do.
Okay, well, I guess then, then, uh, Mr. Francis, his, his review, um, we'll have him go over here to help you.
Sure, sure.
With the, with the plan of the future and, uh, you know, his thoughts. I'd love to go ahead.
Sure, yeah, and the first part of the, um, report, um, specifically deals with the use issue, which we've come to a conclusion on. So, and obviously, again, you've, you could nail on that. It's very conceptual at this time, so real high-level comments. Um, that is an issue with the, uh, the trailer display. Um, yes, it's all being rated two seventy-one is right there. There is a residential district across on two seventy-one. The way the code reads is if it's across from a residential district, you have to have the three hundred feet. Um, so it's a requirement you're going to be bound by. You can seek a variance if you wanted to.
With the freeway, do you think the variance would, would merit some, uh, consideration?
Yeah, it's hard for me to say that. I mean, so it's a practice, you'd have to prove you have a practical difficulty unique to your property. Um, and the presence of a freeway is not typically, um, associated with a practical difficulty. Something like steep topography, exceptional narrowness of the property that requires them to be out there versus in the back or on the, on the interior of the property would be examples. Um, so, and, you know, I would say that's something, if you want to pursue it, you just have to, you know, try to prove you have a practical difficulty unique to the property.
So Mr. Francis, in that regard, as an example, if this is an automobile dealership, you know, typically they're always displaying cars out in the front, you know, on raised platforms and whatnot to show their, uh, products, you know, as far as that's concerned. So have you had other like projects that again that?
Here in Macedonia?
Yes.
No, not, not, I've been there for like sixteen years. I don't think I've ever come across it. Yeah.
This is something.
You're unique, yeah, this is the first one, so, um, and then, you know, again, even if there was, it could be a different zoning district, different circumstances. Um, generally, I'm not a fan of those things out at the road, but that's just my, you know, that's my take on it. Um, I'm not on board zoning appeals. You can certainly make that application to them and, you know, you have to, again, try to prove you have a practical difficulty.
Thank you.
Kevin, could I add one, one thing?
Go ahead.
Uh, i- i- in, in the code section, it does talk about the three hundred feet across a street, and I think they were contemplating a city street with a housing development right across it. And if your argument for the variance might be that this is no street, this is two seventy-one. You might think about that.
That's how I read it.
Well, that's the way I.
Yeah. Because again, there, there's no visually.
It would be inconvenient to, if you're trying to display trailers.
Okay, did you mind that?
All right.
Yeah, so then, um, again, just high level, the architecture, um, you're going to need to take a look at the, uh, the metal that you're proposing, the metal siding that's prohibited under chapter eleven seventy-two of the code. Um, lighting, again, real high level, take a look at the, um, you know, the type of lighting, provide cut sheets and fixture information. You'll need a photometrics plan.
Yes.
Uh, so, store water management, same thing.
Sure.
You know, just, you're going to need more details and then.
Absolutely.
Details on those retaining walls as you flesh your plans out, you know, what, what's happening there and the engineering behind it.
Absolutely.
Um, so, you know, again, there's no conceptual approval that's issued by the planning commission. You got what you needed tonight, which is no, you know, no use obstacle. So it's really going to be who now, you know, release the hounds, so to speak, and get the, the details going with all the, the site details and the grading and how it all works.
Of course.
We'll do a, a more thorough site analysis when we have plans.
Hundred percent. Then we'll submit those, of course.
And you could, um, you could submit your plans. You, you don't have to, these, you know, um, bath towels aren't necessary. You could do eleven by seventeen if you want to scale. I mean, I don't think there's anything that says you have to have these.
Yeah. I'm a little old school, you know, I like the big picture for me.
Yeah, as long as it's to scale, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, these guys all use it digitally. I'm the only old man that still wants paper.
Yeah, I don't know. We've got files of those.
Those are two old men up here.
Oh.
But, so, yeah, eleven by seventeen, if you want to do that, it's fine. It's just cheaper to produce.
Sure.
Just to scale.
Sure.
Uh, is there any other comments from? So, uh, Chris, what do you, uh, recommend for, is there any motion, any action needs to be taken tonight on this? I mean, is it a continually?
I mean, the minutes will reflect that the commission, um, has identified that it's a permitted use in the general industrial district. Um, I don't think you need to take any kind of action with regard to that. I think it'd be hard for you to go back after the fact and try to say you didn't say that. It's all public record, so I, and there's no action on the conceptual plan, so.
Great. Yeah, I think that's all we were looking for. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. It was, uh. Signage to burn and death real quick.
Bad. It's a thing you should do.
I'll go up here. All right, can we, I guess her name.
It's got Frederick, F.R.I.M.G., I pardon nicely, same old.
And as you've been here, I was, uh, we talked about your signage, and I believe you dealt with the issues, but I'll let Mr. Francis go over, uh, your thoughts on this signage.
Well, I'd say I'd ask the applicant, it looks like, yeah, it looks like they're, some of the business lines or product lines are not going to be advertised on the building.
Correct. We went to zoning to try and get two individual signs, because they have four logos. We're going to two. Correct. We went to zoning to try and get two individual signs because they had four logos. We're going to two. They didn't approve that. So the clients said, well, these are their main product lines. They were going to be individual signs, but only one sign is allowed that wall. So it said it will be one complete sign, but there's two logos on.
Yeah, and I think that's that's, I mean, so it's fine from that perspective. I mean, the area is not an issue whatsoever. You can have like three hundred and fifty seven square feet and this is, you know, like sixty seven square feet. The only thing I wouldn't, I don't know, was it purposeful that you did that gray bar with a space in between it?
Actually, that'll be the same color as the Yale background.
Okay.
So it'll just, there won't be that far there. There's just when the designers did it, they just wanted to show some spacing or whatever.
Yeah, eliminate the spacing is good because then it's one sign.
Correct.
I didn't comment on that because I figured that was probably the case, but yeah, if they just make that a.
Color the same as the Yale background.
Yeah. So with that said, it's can be approved with that understanding that it'll just be no spacing in between the signage.
Your comments, sir. Commission, you guys have.
I don't want to make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the sign as submitted. Just the only comment that the darker gray strip between the two logos just be eliminated and it's the same color as a yellow as the applicant stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
All right, next is IHOP. What, what, what? Just snag this real quick. Get your name for that.
Scott Farnsworth.
All right. So I have some opposing. I see this awnings over the windows.
Yep.
Mr. Francis, do you have any, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I didn't prepare a formal memo. I did. There is one issue that I saw and it's probably maybe just an artist rendition issue, but the this was talked about at pretty lengthy conversation. So you can't have two sign, two wall signs on the same elevation. And so this, I believe, was eliminated when we went through the approval process.
Yeah.
And that's the only one that's going to be.
On that elevation.
Yeah. So I would just note for the record, I don't have any real opinions either way on the awnings. I know Pam Schultz provided you a memo, but I would definitely note for the record that is not an approved sign as part of this or any other application.
Correct. It's no longer there. Yeah.
Yep. Before I go through the shows, do you have anything or?
I have nothing.
Okay. So the architectural review consultant, you've seen the council, reach your zone here, just get on the record. Awnings will be located in the town center area, which is covered by the architectural design standards of Macedonia along with specific along with specifically eleven seventy two oh three of the typical town center standards with those standards of my following consideration. Awnings overall require maintenance due to fading and normal wear and tear. It's my recommendation that fabric awnings are not approved due to this issue. I recommend utilizing metal awnings, canopies, which will be, which will require less maintenance. See reason King's Chicken next door. The color is also an issue. If the commission agrees that the blue awnings at the entry only could be appropriate, the remaining awnings should utilize a neutral color such as black. Recommendation is the fabric awnings as proposed not approved. I recommend utilizing metal awnings as well as utilizing the colored materials listed above. I believe the tenant can reasonably accommodate this request. Do you guys have any thoughts on that? Have you any objection to?
I personally, I personally don't. I already forwarded one when we received this memo. I forwarded on to the owner and we're just waiting for feedback. I mean, I think it's a reasonable request if everything else in the area is you know, using metal awnings. I don't think it's out of the question to maintain that standard. And then I think the color is, you know, a non-issue code. So.
Okay. Do you guys think?
No.
You guys just put awning back. You guys are just using metal awnings and? We would, yeah, we'd also just.
I might say, Kevin, that we had, we stopped at the IHOP near the Akron Canton Airport for breakfast yesterday and they on purpose because and they did have blue metal awnings and they did look very nice.
Yeah.
They were blue and metals. And so maybe other IHOPs possibly use metal, maybe to save maintenance. I don't know why.
Well, color retention on metal tends to last a lot longer. This is just what our customer had proposed to IHOP as far as their renderings are concerned. So it is still very much, you know, adaptable, I guess I should say. So will you guys use the blue on, just so we can make sure we get this correct in our approval, but are you guys going to use blue awnings and or the blue metal at the door and then use black the rest of the way around? Or did you guys propose to use that? I would kind of leave it you guys' disposal as far as what you'd like to see. I think the customer would be open. I mean, they could push back on all blue. I think most awnings that I see are all blue. But if it's a deal breaker, sure, it's something we could bring up. Do you have a? I'm happy that they're at least using, that you guys are okay with using metal. I think black will look honestly the best on here, but if it's a branding thing, I really have, I don't have a horrible issue with blue, at least at the main entrance that you guys would like, and then the rest of them be black. Does anybody else have any like solid opinions? I think that the fabric, I agree, it just, it does, it looks bad after a while it fades. So.
And we do have one that has had fabric and it has faded.
It's the Dunkin Donuts is really bad. So I'm glad to see that. That I'm just happy to. I mean, does anybody else have an opinion in terms of?
I don't. I mean, if they, if they think that the suggestions from architecture review are acceptable, then I would, I would go with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with Pam's. I'm fine with Pam's recommendations. I really am. I think that's, that's fine. So I guess we I'll just make a motion and I'll make a motion that we go off of the architectural consultant's recommendations of only using blue metals, awnings at the entrance and the other awnings around primarily the building in black metal.
Your second? I'll second. Any more discussion on on that?
Maybe, maybe there is a little more. You said you have to talk to them about that black because I don't remember when I went to the IHOP that they had any black
Correct.
Other awnings. You have to discuss that with them because we make this motion that it's approved this way, we'd have to come back here.
No, I understand. No, that would be my question for for you guys. If it is in fact a branding issue and they come back and say, hey, blue is our color, we have to, you know.
I thought it was. That's what I gathered.
How much, you know, how firm are we on the use of black? I mean, I can definitely accommodate the metal and I personally agree with the metal. I think that's fine, but I've never seen an IHOP with anything, any awnings other than blue.
That's what I thought. Why don't we amend it to say if it's, if it's a branding issue that we'd approve it blue everywhere? Something like that. Is there possible? Why do we have to make it black because our we're unique in Macedonia or something? I thought it might be a branding issue. Probably is.
And I don't necessarily feel extremely shot. Like Scott said, I mean, the black probably would look the best, at least from just appearance. I know, you know, initially when IHOP came in years ago or something like that, wanted to be out by Chili's. You know, they wanted the blue roof that would be, you know, so you just can't in this district especially. And they came back, you know, with a different location. They didn't propose that again, but but do you, you know, the I know Pam Schultz, her recommendation was the black with the one blue, but I mean, I don't know, anybody here, it kind of sounds like none of the four of us have a strong, strong feeling that it needs to be black.
Right. And the commission has that authority. You know, I, we were just kind of talking about that. I think Pam kind of drew the black on the awnings similar to the blue versus, the black versus blue on the roof. And I think that's where she's actually coming from on that. I think if the, the commission doesn't have strong feelings about the black and the blue seems to be okay, I think, I think that would be an appropriate move for the, for the commission.
You feel like?
Yeah, so I'll let life just our approval and I'll just make a recommendation that we approved the awnings on the building to be metal and the blue color is acceptable. And also just note that the I guess it's the Macedonia sign on the side of the building that says IHOP on there is not part of this approval or was not approved.
You second. I second that. All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Panda Express.
This is trained.
Good evening. My name is Ross McArthur. Stand up.
So I'm just west of here. All right. So we've got proposed signage. Guess we could jump right into the planner's comments. You're okay with that, sir?
Yeah.
Prince, go ahead.
Sure. So I'll just read from my report. So the Panda Restaurant is being built on vacant land. It was previously the Golden Corral in crossings of the Golden Lake Shopping Center. It's a little under a twenty four hundred square foot fast food restaurant. And it's sitting on the eastern side, eastern half of what was the Golden Corral, the western half remains open for future development. The ground monument sign actually reflects that as a spot for the future tenant that'll be on the other side. So that's good that they're, they're thinking ahead about that. The ground monument sign itself is regulated under section G one of the crossings at Golden Lake criteria. And it's allowed to be forty five square feet in ten feet in height. You know, it's that, that, that contradicts what our zoning code allows, which is eight feet and forty eight feet tall, forty square feet. So, but the crossing does allow it. I think ten feet is probably a bit too tall for ground monument signs. It'd be nice to see it be compliant with our eight feet that the Macedonia code permits. The wall signs that are being proposed, thirty four point zero one square feet, that's the north building elevation. And that's just the, the name of the, of the business, not necessarily the logo. Then the other three elevations, south, east and west are the logo, each are thirty six square feet. So the signage being proposed on the total amount of wall signs being proposed is one hundred and forty two point oh one square feet. When you combine that with the ground monument sign, it's one eighty seven point oh one. Section eleven seventy three oh nine F two of the planning zoning code permits two square feet of identification signage for each lineal foot of building frontage. The applicant details in their analysis, the building frontage, they state that there's three frontages. A primary frontage, which identified by the applicant is sixty one point two five feet. The secondary frontage is forty five point three three feet. And then the applicant goes out and state there's a rear frontage that contains forty point six nine feet. The primary frontage in this instance is provided one hundred and twenty two point five square feet. Secondary frontage is reduced by forty percent as identified in the code. That's allowed to have thirty six point two seven square feet. And then that total results in one hundred and fifty eight point seven seven. The only way that rear frontage would qualify is if it has a customer entrance. If a rear customer entrance does exist, then that additional thirty two point five five square feet would be allowed. It's of course based on that same forty percent limitation that the other elevation was subject to. That would result in a total of one hundred and ninety one point three two square feet, which then the application would be compliant. If there is not a rear customer entrance on that back, that back frontage or that rear frontage, then one of two things often happen. They'll have to reduce the three or four other signs to a smaller area to make up for the overage that they have. Or they could seek a variance from the board of zoning appeals. Then I just go on to talk about the proposal also includes various other instructional and directional signages to alert customers of particular site amenities, the drive through entrance in particular. Those signs are acceptable and are exempt from the code pursuant to eleven seventy nine oh five A eight and approved by the planning commission so long as they're four square feet or less. And I just commented the exact area of each of those instructional signs needs to be confirmed by the applicant to ensure compliance to make sure they are exempt pursuant to the code. If they're not, then that's a different issue in terms of the total square footage of the, of the signage. And then with regard to the logos on some of the instructional signage, the planning commission has historically permitted the logo to be utilized on the ordering menu boards. But in this case, a a logo or identification signage is being proposed on the drive through the clearance bar. It contains the Panda Express name. That signage will need to be eliminated or variance would need to be applied for from the board of zoning appeals. So provided that we deal with that rear entrance and if there is a customer entrance on that rear elevation, then that allowable area is present. If not, the signs would have to be reduced in area to compensate for the overage or variance would have to be sought through the board of zoning appeals. And then that Panda Express name would need to be removed from that drive through clearance bar or a variance would need to be again, requested from the VCA.
All right. Thank you. I guess first question is, is there a customer entrance?
There is a emergency entrance exit, but there's not a customer.
That's what I thought. I think Mr. Rodick brought the elevations that were approved and that confirms that.
Right, yeah, that's an emergency exit. And it, there is no customer entrance on the south elevation of the building.
Yeah. So in that case, that, that section of the code wouldn't be applicable in this case. So they would either need to be the other signs would have to be reduced to compensate for the overage or seek a variance.
Do you know, off the tab, what you might? Have you maybe you might pursue?
Higher pay grade than than what I make, so they'll have to make that.
And seems to be like, like not a big deal, but is the, the drive through, the name on the drive through clearance bar?
On the heading bar, I don't see that as an issue to come down. Are you okay with it being on the order canopy?
I mean, that's typically the commission is allowed that.
Yeah, I don't think that's. I'll show you guys when you guys. Got a problem with that.
You mentioned four square feet on the directional sign from the thank you sign. Does that apply to the menu board itself? Cause the menu board is thirty two square feet.
Yeah, we've the, the, the city and the commission is historically not included that because it's essentially it's, it's not like it's, I've done, it's not advertising signage, right? So you get up to the menu board, the only people seen are the people who are. I never understood why you need your logo on a menu board. I, I will not understand until the day I die, but.
I'll have a Big Mac.
Yeah. We already know where you are at that point. It's like the stop bar or the, you know, the clearance bar. Really, I need to know it's a panda clearance bar, but anyhow, that's, I digress. So because the commission has never had an issue with it being on the menu board.
Just a quick question. I'm sorry. I didn't quite understand. You said the sign on the rear needed an entrance and if it wasn't going to be there, we had to reduce the signs on the east. on the east and west and north elevations?
So you have an additional Panda logo signed on that back entrance that, you're not with Allen Industries, are you?
I am.
You are with Allen. Okay. Whoever did this analysis attempted to say that that rear entrance qualified under our code as having bonus square footage. And that can only qualify as if it was a customer entrance. So the way the code reads is if you have a, an entrance facing a, you know, a side lot that has a parking lot, you get bonus square footage for that. If you have a large lot area, you get bonus. We give all kinds of signage out, but we don't give it just for the sake of giving it for like an access, an emergency access. So if you could eliminate that one, it would just make it easier.
And that's probably what will happen. I, I can't imagine that they'll want to go through a variance for that. But the east elevation with the drive-through window is, does not have a customer entrance to it either. Would that be permissible? Although it does have road frontage exposure.
I guess, does that have road exposure, or is that just parking?
Generally, most cities allow parking lot exposure. Entrance to mall exposure, anything like that would be considered municipal.
Oh, yeah. But, so, but you're, yeah, that, it's okay. You can have a sign on that side.
Okay.
It's just you're not getting bonus for, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you for a second. So you're not getting a, a bonus for that elevation. You're getting the bone, you're getting your main elevation, I think. Let me go back and look at your, your analysis. Yeah, your primary frontage, your secondary frontage, which is your customer entrance where sign B is located, where you're proposing. Sign D can be there, it's just you're not getting a bonus.
Bonus.
Yeah. So if you, if you keep it to A, B, and D, and eliminate C, you'll be good. This commission could approve it, subject to elimination of C, or achieving a variance, and you don't have to come back. If they were inclined to do that, to save, because I think you said you drove 12 hours to get here or something crazy. It'd save you a trip back if you did that.
Well, we'll eliminate the rear elevation. So we'll, we'll go with these other signs as they're laid out, and we'll, we'll get rid of that rear elevation. So C goes away.
Yes. And then you'll confirm that the four square feet is being met with your instructional signage.
Oh, 100%.
Yeah. And then that, that clearance bar won't have identification signage on it. And if that's the case, and the commission's comfortable with that, they could approve it subject to those, those stipulations. I think everybody's going to know it's Panda. We know it's been done.
Any questions from?
Just the 10-foot monument sign. I don't have a problem with the height, but what I would like to see is to see the brick go all the way across the bottom of it. It almost is almost like a pole sign.
Yeah.
I think having it, just that brick all the way down to line up to the upper part of the sign would look a lot better. Similar to what Golden Corral had before. I know their sign was on the face of the brick, but I think just having that brick go all the way down would look a lot better.
The width of the sign.
Are you concerned about sightlines at all? Because if you extend that brick on either side, you're going to eliminate a lot of the sightlines. And that is at a height where people are driving, snow build up. That is a.
Is it sitting back within the?
It, it is, it has a setback 10 feet, which is required from the property line.
It says 5 feet.
Five, five feet, I'm sorry.
We are, I mean, there's, there's no cars.
Yeah, there's no, we're employing another, I.
We're a full property line that, you know, it's, it's on the, around the border of the two restaurants, and you have the driveway that's close to it is signalized.
Yeah, it's, it's.
In a wonderful way.
Yeah, I think so too. I think, see, having that goal, because the neighboring, then it would also work for the neighboring tenant too. Yeah, I'd prefer to still see gold all the way to the ground.
No problem.
I don't think it's gonna, from a sightline perspective, I don't think it's gonna hurt. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, Anara has theirs all the way to the ground too. And that's what was there before too. And actually, theirs is closer to the intersection.
Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Yes, please.
I mean, ideally, it would have been nice if they didn't attach, I'm assuming, is that a cabinet sign?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, those are, it's such a really nice building. That's kind of a hokey sign, to be quite frank. It would have been nice if they would have taken their logo and attached it to the brick and left the other space.
That's single sided, and a single sided on either side of the brick.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that would look so much nicer. I mean, they've, they've, they're putting a huge investment in that building. That little bit of money to do that would just, I think aesthetically, look a lot nicer.
But then you'd have to extend the brick even further past the sign itself to give it that accent. And it would have to go above and outside of the sign box itself to give that architectural accent of the brick. Would you agree?
I don't know that I would agree, because I'm not sure I understand your analysis. And I don't know, maybe Mr. Wong.
I think what he's getting at, what you're saying is, you feel you'd have to go wider. But I think with the elimination of the cabinet itself.
Yeah.
And you would actually be about the same width as what that, what the cabinet in right now, the brick.
Then you wouldn't see the brick. Like, I mean, if the.
You'd see the brick.
Brick base is the same size as that top portion of the panel, then you'd only see it from the side. If, if you wanted a true accent of that brick base with the faces mounted to it, like a single sided and single sided, you'd really want the brick to accent around the other side and really show off. But then you're getting into a real can of worms there.
Can I ask a question, Kevin?
Please.
Also, isn't there going to be another tenant for, for part of this parcel? And they might have their own thoughts on what, what they want on their monument sign. And so if we conform it.
They don't have to pay for it, then they'd be happy.
They have a feature, basically, they called on us.
So I mean, we'd have to leave space for them to put their sign up too. I, I, it's a monument sign, I think. So I, I don't know why we'd make it quite a few requirements for Panda on this monument sign, when there might be another tenant with different thoughts.
Well, I think you, you could easily get two tenants on a 45 square feet.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's, what, what they've got is not totally out of character. So I think if you're, I'm looking at Chick-fil-A signs, you know, it's, it looks like it's a brick base of like cabin on top. It, it, you know, this I think actually will look better than what they've got. But I think if, if they, if you made it the width of the, the cabinet, it would be a long way to go. And you could mention to them, you know, the, the city's thoughts is, man, you're dumping a lot into this problem. Make it this beautiful, beautiful. You could go a little above beyond it, have a beautiful sign. You know, what you've got, most likely, probably recommend here to, to be approved. If they'd like to reconsider, we could certainly, you know, be open to looking at something that you could probably send in, not have to attend.
I'm sure this would not be a problem to extend the brick and eliminate that of their elevation. So they want to get going.
Mention, mention it to them. I guess, you know, geez, they thought, you could, you know, really make a beautiful sign if you wanted to. It was something that we would, we would be willing to look at without sending somebody else. So, so it was just a modification. You'll walk away probably tonight, assuming with, with, with the approval. But think of, you know, tell them to think of.
It will take months.
All right. Any other comments from Victor? You make the motion. All right. I've got a bunch of stuff ready there. So I'll make a motion to approve the signage with the following conditions. Eliminate, the elimination of the sign on the south side indicated the sign C. The applicant needs to confirm four square feet is met for the instructional, is that what we're referring to as instructional signage? No signage on the clearance bar. And the last one, the brick base for the monument sign is the width of the sign. I think. I think that is it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Or is there, did I miss anything? Is there? Okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good one. Drive safe.
All right. Nice, guys. TJ Maxx.
How you guys doing?
We've all probably been here before, but we're just getting the names of those here.
Mike Siprani.
Eric Greenberg.
Craig Kausberg.
Look to how much you really go to, maybe this kind of self-explanatory here. I don't want to cut your shirt or give you a chance to.
You know, I, I think, I think if you want to read the comments, and Brian's letter, and then we can have a conversation from there. Unless you guys already read it, we can just dive right in.
No, I'll let, for instance, go ahead and go through your comments.
Yeah, I didn't really have too many, you know, issues or concerns, just with regard to the service stock in the back. I think it's, we've already talked about this with the last application. It's pretty well screened back there. So I think that's no problem doing that, just the converted materials. They're gonna, you're gonna restore, and it'll be the same materials in the back. And then the front of the, the front of the tenant's face of TJ Maxx looks to be pretty well similar to what the Burlington was, like a cement board with a little, small use of the, the drive-in or E- fist or the cornice.
Yeah, and just a, a quick comment. I think the clarification is that we're using a drive-in color, which kind of takes E- fist, but we're really just calling out the color and drive it. You know, we'll, we'll paint the cement panel to match.
So it's a cement panel.
Yeah, it's, it's a cement panel, but the architects use the drive-in color, so it's called drive-in number 313. You know what I mean?
No, I, yeah, I do understand.
But I think that's where the confusion was with, with, with Pam's letter. It easily confused, I think.
Which are you using? What's P? P3, P3 what is that?
It's a. Well, those are the paint colors, yeah.
Oh, those are your paint colors.
So I don't have 10 copies, but I did bring in samples. So this is the neon red, and this is the China white.
Yeah. So, so one of the questions, it's called neon red, but if it, this is neon red. This is the national TJ Maxx branded color. It's, it's red. It's not, I mean, I don't know why they call it neon red.
That's a Sherwin-Williams color, or?
It's actually a Benjamin Moore.
Yeah.
More than likely, I'll try to convince our contractor to use a Sherwin-Williams color match.
But you are, I should go back. You are proposing an E- fist corner, a drive-in corner.
The corners. Cornices, yeah.
Okay, that's, I think that was the exact same that you did with.
Yeah, it's, it's the exact same language, same materials. There is the, the question about the, the color.
Yeah, the China white.
Yeah. I mean, China white and French, what are they? French vanilla.
French vanilla.
You know, I mean, it's, it's a tough one, and we can go back, maybe even a Burlington or one or the other. You know, I mean, TJ Maxx is gonna want their standard color they use on every store. And Burlington wants their standard color they use on every store. It's really hard when you have these national retailers fighting. But double tip to us, what do we care? Trouble we have, French red.
The heck's going on? Office Max, since what goes up, I'm guessing those are different colors than what the Burlington is too.
Yeah.
At that point, you already do have different colors.
So I just raise that as an issue, just to pop through, so you know they are, they are different. And then it looks like those, the, I don't even know if they're Burke Collins, but to the right and left of the doors, is that TJ Maxx signage? Yeah, so it's gonna be the same concept as what we went through with Burlington. You can't have it. They can try to get a variance. I don't.
I will tell you, it's a, it's a running joke. In our emails and conversations, we have told them literally, probably 20 times in 20 different emails and phone conversations, that's not going to get approved.
Yeah.
They refused to take it off. So we said, we'll take it. And when you approve it without those, then we'll go back and say, if you guys want a variance, please go get a variance. If you don't, we're just gonna put a red sign for you.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it has been a running joke.
You figured it was gonna be a common.
Of course, yeah. And Craig won't let it go. Every email he sends me. And don't forget, that's not gonna be.
Yeah. Yeah. So that, so that was something I.
Including the one under the awning, too.
Yeah, they, they also have an under canopy sign.
Like a blade?
Although if it's, yeah, if it's a blade sign, is that allowed?
Blade sign's fine. We allow, we allow them at Burlington, I think. And they have them all in the column.
She just approved it for TJ Maxx last month. That's what it was when they came this month.
Well, TJ Maxx came in front of you.
Yeah, we've already approved their signage.
Yeah.
And they didn't include those column signs?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's surprising that they came in front of you guys last month.
Yeah, we, we approved theirs last month, and they did do that design. We were fine with the one hanging over that, so.
Okay.
The blade, blade sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the minutes can just reflect, you know, if the commission.
Maybe we should stare at their signage.
If the commission proves it, it just reflect that the, the, those signs are not permitted and not part of the application, just that they don't think they're getting them. And then just there was no lighting or landscaping, but the plans did say that there was gonna be.
So lighting landscaping was approved based, probably in code.
Yeah, that's what I sort of thought.
So I, I reprinted it and got it here for you.
Yeah, okay. So. Yeah, part of the record.
We're not changing any lighting and landscaping as part of the E- fist.
Yeah, it's the same previously approved. And the lighting's already done.
Yeah.
The whole site was upgraded with LED lighting.
And then I guess I didn't note it on here, but what is the, the status of the, the corner build out? I, I thought that that was gonna be built out with the TJ Maxx.
So that is, that was our plan. The leasing turns out that TJ Maxx signed, I'll do something in October, October 1, I think. And the next tenant was signed October 1. They pushed it to November. We'd like to, more than likely, we're gonna package in for the next meeting. And we've been, we've been negotiating with that. We've already shared our proposed storefront. It's gonna be slightly different than that big tower element that we currently are proposing, just because it's going to incorporate the other tenants kind of imaging. It's gonna be, it would get, and I mean, we're gonna bring that at the next meeting, just kind of similar to what we talked about in December, right? We've got this, as we march down, we're gonna come in front of you guys for each tenant.
Yeah.
And this one will change that element a little bit, but.
Substantially change? Because that was talked about quite a bit.
Yeah, it was talked about quite a bit. I get that. And the tenant's aware that we are, we're, we've been negotiating with them, pushing back, knowing what the expectations of this committee are. And working it into, basically, we, we've gotten to the point where they're, they've agreed to move their storefront entrances to that corner. So that makes sense, right? They've got a mirror the way they normally would do their store, but they can get it all to work. And then it's, how do we wrap the corner with their front identity? And I think that's where we're gonna come and present what their ideas are, ideas.
And I know that back corner then also was talked about, because that was the outdoor green area, or the, like, landscape sample area for Kmart.
Yeah.
And you wanted to keep that, because you thought maybe you would get a restaurant use, maybe with a patio or something out there? Because the commission wanted to eliminate that with your first application.
So I'm pretty sure they eliminated. Yeah. So it, it's, it's a large, it's, instead of it being like five tenants, which I think they'd originally. And so it, it's, it's a large, it's, instead of it being like five tenants, which I think they'd originally, it's gonna be, this is going to be a very large pending.
Right.
Tenants.
Good.
Um, very desirable. Tenant, to be honest, that's it. Um, really, really a great, um. A great company to have here and so they've, they've got a much bigger square footage, much bigger planning, so there's a whole. Package, we'll be able to show what, what the development would be here on there. And ideally, we would have had them signed and put the whole package in front of you, but we didn't get there.
Yeah, I guess, because, actually, I think, you know, the completion of the, the whole storefront side was actually part of, part of Burlington, not even, you know, TJ Maxx, it was, that was part of the conditions of, of the Burlington was to do that.
Well, it was that within a, I think we said a two-year timeframe. Now it was for the rest of the front of the building, the corner. And the side was part of Burlington's approval, actually. We went back and did this into the minutes. So the Burlington, when Burlington was completed, the corner tower element and that side elevation was to be done at the same time. Administratively, you guys could work out what, if that garden center stayed or went away, but that piece had to be done. And then the center. Part of the front between what? When you guys didn't know it was gonna be, or when you couldn't say it was gonna be TJ Maxx to the corner element was, had to be done within that certain timeframe. But that corner element.
That, that corner element, the way we. Kind of reset there, worked through that, it was supposed to be, we would build that too within that timeframe, assuming that this other tenant.
It was part of the approval.
We'll have to go back and read that. This is the whole.
So, I mean, I guess. Long story, is you, you've. You've got somebody come, you know, that you want to bring in there, I guess, are, you know, we. Love to say tonight, you know, well, you know, you get approval, you gotta finish the rest, but. You, you don't have what you're proposing, I guess, makes it a little difficult. It's not exactly the same, sounds like you got somebody kind of right on the heels of it. Um. The thing is, I guess, if we, if we approve tonight, we don't say anything about the rest of it, then. You know, we've lost, and this guy, you know, whoever this is. Straighten goes away in the next two weeks and you don't put this sign, yeah, now we've got nothing to hold the rest of that to get done. That's our struggle, I guess, with right now, what? What do we do? To try and allow you the flexibility to propose what they want to do around the rest of the building, but also feel secure that. If that, you know, tenant falls away, uh, the next few weeks, we don't get that signing, that we're not gonna be stuck with. It's a bad looking building for the rest of the thing, or whoever knows how, I mean, TJ Maxx, who thought it was gonna be right on the heels of Burlington.
Yeah.
I think that was December or something like that. And it's, I know everything takes longer than you expect, especially with everything that's going on right now. So I don't, I'm kind of open to thoughts on, on where to go from, from here.
Can we approve it like, uh, Brian suggested, that we approve it, just what, what he had in his comments, subject to his comments, we approve that one?
We completed the first, what they were given approval for the first time.
Well, I have to check the minutes and all that to see exactly what all that was about. All I have is what's in front of me here. That was Brian, I, I, Brian, I guess you checked it, uh. What was approved earlier.
I, I didn't, no, I just raised the issue because I, I, I thought it was maybe contingent on when TJ Maxx came, but it sounds like. Maybe you listened to the minutes, because the meetings are all, you know, online recorded, so if, I can only believe if that's what it said, it was supposed to be with Burlington, then you have a performance issue. Which, you know, I don't say that in a negative way, right? But, um, I, you know, I do, I do understand, like these guys said, some, these things take a long time to, to get cemented in place. I would say that if. And it's just talking out loud, that if that doesn't come to fruition and, you know, signed in the next thirty to forty-five days, that. You know, no further occupancies will be issued and you need to post like a. Cash bond or a letter of credit to do the work. That could be a. And subject to a development agreement. And I see the city's position, they want to get what they expected. I understand your position, it takes time to get these things done, but. To their point, how do they ensure that now? Um, outside of consulting, I do this in another community as a, as a regular job, and I always require a, a cash bond or a letter of credit with a development agreement that says. Hey, if you don't do it, you're on the hook and you have so much time to do it, and if you don't, then we'll do it for you.
I think as we talked about last time was a development agreement.
Yeah.
That we could do that. And I think Mike was open.
I was, yeah, definitely. I, I really thought that this, uh, the, the tower was, we had that window of time, like you mentioned, for the rest of the storefront, but I.
Yeah, it was just the. I went back and I did, because.
Yeah.
I. I couldn't remember either and I was, and that's why I went back, to make sure that I could clearly, and I, what, there was a lot of discussions about it, but I think where we ended up landing, I'm trying to write it down generically, but. Where we landed was that. Yeah, this is a Burlington side rear. Tower tied together and. It was option seven eight, completion of the west side of the building, and then we were going to administratively, just like you guys work out if you're gonna remove or keep that bump on the side. To potentially show front, fronts, future tenants, because I know that there was a bunch of discussion, like originally, I think when you guys had your submittal, we saw that were. Like pitch roofs on the front, and then when you guys showed up, you guys brought a different set to where everything was blessed, so we were fine with that.
Yeah, I think the comment was that either all of them or not.
Yeah, you gave them, or did not, which we were fine with, because the rest of the development didn't have any, so.
Right, and it wasn't for sealed, they were gonna be out, I think these other two.
Yeah, yeah, there was no, right. So that's kind of where it was, and that was like kind of around the, I think I remarked on about the fifty-minute mark is where we had the discussion of what the approval was gonna be. I wrote it down.
Fifty-minute mark, just our part?
Yes, super fun, actually.
Please don't bring back those memories.
I really didn't want to. Questions kept coming up, right?
But what if we could, we could do something similar? Maybe more clearly defined with the approval of TJ Maxx?
No, well, yeah, I mean, I guess, here, here's what we could do. Sorry, I got it wrong, but I guess I wonder if, you know. The, the look of it is, is what we discussed and, and that's fine. I guess if you guys are planning on being back within a month or so, and I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, if you can't do this, but a building permit can't be issued for TJ Maxx until. We either see plans and they're approved for the. For the next tenant or. I don't know, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to.
That's kind of where our way up is, right, in, in timing of getting started with construction, the, the way the lease languages work with these, these big national.
Yeah, I agree, it's run.
We, well, this one, we, I mean, as much as we're not under the gun, we're under the gun, we've gotten, we've got substantially longer time to get it done. But the problem is, we have to get our permit in order for them to then submit their drawings for permit, that, you know, that, that's the timing that we're trying to play.
Gotcha.
Is that. If you don't get the building permit. Then they get to delay doing it, you know what I mean? I'm just, I'm just, then I help everybody to understand it, because I don't. You understand it past that.
I mean, you're in a quandary, so, I mean, I don't, I don't think you can. It's an administrative enforcement action, quite frankly. You have an approval that was predicated on something that happened that didn't happen. Now, does Mr. Rodick and his staff want to come out and enforce on this and try to, you know, it's, it's silly.
That's the thing I don't think we want.
You don't want, they're trying to figure out a way to like. I think the cat, the cat, you know, do, do, this development agreement says, if they're not back here in thirty to forty-five days. You know, or there's some actionable item to get us close to thirty to forty-five days, then they have to post a letter of credit or cash, a cash bond with a development agreement that says they're going to build the tower as approved. And it's gotta be built within a certain amount of time. Um, because it sounds like they're gonna be bringing a national tenant that maybe wants to alter that tower a bit.
And that's, that's fair, I mean.
And you guys are reason.
Number one, anybody just heard something that has to turn it down, and it was kind of why we agreed that not to touch the front part of it, because. You guys didn't know where your storefront goes and stuff, we're gonna.
Right, right, and that, that's kind of, I mean, it's kind of why we didn't do that element is. That, you know, these deals take a while, they've been in play for quite some time. We're at the, they gave us the November first date, so. We feel we're there, but it's now just a matter of getting.
Two, three weeks.
Yeah, and we had a call last week with their, their head of store management, he's, he's on board now, so we can submit it.
Okay.
TJ Maxx, actually, was that TJ Maxx, actually, I think the mayor called their office and they confirmed they were coming here back in July. I didn't get them to sign the lease till September thirtieth. So, I mean, I know, I know, I'm forty, thirty-five, forty-eight. So. No, we, we can do something.
The mayor announced it.
Yeah.
Two months before we actually got this lease signed, so.
Yes, that's fine, yeah.
And then they said, why didn't you submit to planning already? She had to sign the lease.
Well, it's a problem.
Well, they were here before they. That's the crazy thing.
I think that's one thing he made us announce, when they submitted, finally submitted plans for their signage. It's been, okay.
We made a lot of sense and it's just funny that they would submit for. A permit before they even signed the lease. We weren't the ones holding up the sign.
That's probably the least important thing.
It's crazy. Yeah, apparently signing that lease.
Because that's actually what brought that conversation up about the rest of the building, was that. It started to, I think everybody's memories got jogged, that. TJ Maxx is coming here, wasn't the other part supposed to be, part of the other part supposed to be finished, and that's.
And I thought that was part of the, we had that.
I, there were a lot of discussions back and forth that I.
I can say we walked away with the understanding that we had that timeframe of, we get the whole development done, and if we didn't, then we would go.
I don't think we even put that in there, to be honest, so.
So what if we do something like that now, like Brian said, you know, approve, approve the front of TJ Maxx, but. Administration work in the development, development agreement that specifies exactly what Brian said.
Yeah, they don't.
Again.
Submit the, the new.
I mean. What if, what if we just said December thirty-first at that point? I mean, because, it's not, because actually, if, if you're thinking November first, we all know how this goes, thirty days is, is gonna get you past November first, forty-five days is gonna get you. Pretty much right around the holiday time. I think if you just say December thirty-first, it has to be. That gives you two more, they could come back in November, planning commission, you could come back in December, planning commission, before we end the agenda for January.
Yeah, because as long as it's submitted at that point, it's, it's a.
Right, I guess then you're gonna come to some conclusion about what looks like.
Exactly. Think you can get it submitted in sixty days?
I hope so, yeah, yeah, and we, we've gone far enough with.
Maybe we submit before we sign their store planning, we're moving along.
It's not even just a legal sign.
We could, it's possible we could submit it, take the signage off and just put tenant and then.
I was gonna ask, so just even come in, even if it's an informal meeting?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Take off the sign in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take off their brand identity. Quite honestly, it's. Pushing the boundaries of even being identifiable as their brand right now, so. I don't think, I don't even think, I don't think they could figure out the tentative, it's, it's drastically different. I mean, and we've explained to them, you know, their main storefront is like a metal panel system, and we're like, yeah, that's. Just not gonna happen, so. Um. They, they understood once we showed them pictures, once we, I'll be honest, Starbucks is the biggest town. Here's what Starbucks did in the city, and they're like, okay, we get it, you know, so. They're on board, they, they want this spot, so it's, it's good, but yeah, so we could take their name on and do the same thing, I think that would help.
Good enough. We're the mechanics of the development agreement. Your, is that the administration preparation? Yeah, typically, it's the city that would.
Right, yeah, they, I, I'll, I'll advise the mayor that, it's typically, we have a typical development agreement for certain types of, of construction. Um, and a, a lot of, Lodge Rush is out of town right now, but he'll be back first part of next week and we'll touch base with him and get that worked out and be in touch with you.
Okay.
Yeah, and then most likely the administration be in touch with you directly, but I said, I'll, I'll facilitate it to that point.
Okay. So who's gonna write this? They're gonna be back next month, like.
I still think it's still gonna be until the.
Number thirty. Seven thirty-first, and then also at the end, just, yeah, if you're back next month, we'll just. Keep that out, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's a fair move.
Did you happen to write down the case number of Burlington? Like, how, how do you identify them in your?
It was the December twentieth meeting, like what I, but that's where I want to file it.
Why don't you just, um, not even tie into this one, pull that one back off that approval and modify that approval to get until February first of December?
Two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, two thousand twenty-one. Well, right, and you're gonna take that and modify and allow them to come back before. The end of December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two to submit for the corner unit.
So this would be approved pending the. Resubmit all of the, the rest of the shopping centers that have that.
For the development.
Or a development agreement?
Or, you know. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not in love with, I, I'm not in love with buying TJ Maxx, though, because it's an enforcement issue related to the.
It's a real issue, essentially.
Yeah, so I, I would. I would retake up that issue and tie it to a December thirty-first compliance, and if not, then a development agreement would be entered into. With a cash deposit or letter of credit that ties them to build it as approved.
Okay.
All right, I just think it's, I.
You're just modifying it.
Yeah, I think.
That first that we do.
I do, yeah, that's fine, I'm good with that.
And you're causing.
Yeah.
The only, sorry. The only other comment I can, was are you guys actually modifying that tower elements, like it's there right now? Is that new to any extent that TJ Maxx?
Oh, the one that we drew here?
No, the TJ Maxx tower elements, is that?
Slightly wider and existing columns are being replaced, so.
The only comment I would have is, where you guys are termed the Burlington.
Yeah.
You can see kind of a lot of the, the roof number in, when it comes up and flash, gets flashed and stuff, so maybe just somehow terminate that a little differently on the TJ Maxx.
Okay.
It's a detail, it's a detail. Um. I'm not gonna like.
No, we can, we can hold it, yeah, maybe I set that up too.
Yeah, there's something weird about it, I don't know, something didn't, like the returns didn't go back from where you don't see it, or. I meant to go by there and take a picture and then have time before meeting today, though.
Yeah, well, that's, that's curious.
It's more on the left-hand side than. That's, um, okay, I'll make a motion that we approve. The TJ Maxx submittal as submitted, which is the addressing of any. Brian's comments.
I'll second that. Does that include? He mentioned in his comments the, the elevation of the column signs.
Yes. That's why I kind of love it, it's Brian's approval or Brian's letter, so.
All right, so there's motion, second, any more discussion on the TJ Maxx approval?
Just to clarify, I'm sure that does accept the China white. I almost forgot.
Yeah, kind of said.
Because that's a submittal, so I just want to make sure.
What, do you have the other color that you guys, that, do you have the other?
That's, that's on the wall now.
Yeah.
I don't have a sample of it, but I.
Yeah.
I can, I can get a photo of that next to us.
I mean, even if we get the approval pending the final paint approval color.
Okay, I'll amend it, just that words. And just the, I'll amend, I'll modify my, my approval, just to state that the. Um, our practice is supply a sample of the divine white next to the existing, the now existing Burlington. French vanilla, is that what it's called?
Yeah, I don't even know what you think it is, but.
Just. So Brian's example, like. I didn't say Burlington.
Guess who's these?
Sorry.
So everything we had before with.
Well, yeah, just add that they're going to supply a submittal of the. Burlington white next to the divine white that is being proposed.
Being China.
China white.
China.
Next to China white. Being proposed by TJ Maxx, or just review and approval.
All right, okay, so that's.
Well, I'll second that.
All right. All right, so that's, well, I'll second that. All right. All in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then. I'll take a stab at the, uh, the, you know, with December twentieth.
Yeah, okay, um. I'll talk through this openly and then we'll figure out how we write it. So I, so is next issue is that we'll just, um, we're going to, I guess, amend or add amend the December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one approval of Burlington to add a condition that if a new, if the rest of the building architecture is not reviewed by and approved by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two, then a letter of credit or bond needs to be put in place through a development agreement with the owner and the city.
Do you want to put? If the application has not been filed to appear before the planning commission before December thirty-first, that way if it ends up going to the January meeting, the application date would be more important than I think the meeting itself.
That's fine, yes.
Isn't you got a picture on that?
Yeah, approval to, yeah, if the rest of the building is.
That's. Was submitted by, you said.
There need to, uh, uh, file an application for the, um, I guess the, the remainder of the facade of the building before December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
So that includes robbery inside.
Right, yeah. Actually, the robberies.
That was some.
Well, I, I think. Yeah, so I can.
Did you got all the part about the agreement? Um, okay.
That's actually something to worry.
So if by that date it hasn't occurred, then the developer and the city will need to enter into an, into a development agreement? Or either a letter of credit or bond will need to be put in place.
Okay.
All right, I'll second that. And then, Mr. Prince, I think you had a comment on that.
I don't know what you, um, actually did, so I don't have a comment anymore. I just thought it was something simple as, you know, motion to extend approval of the facade improvements approved by the planning commission on blank date um, to provide the applicant through the end of two thousand twenty-two to file a revised application. Otherwise, a development agreement with appropriate.
Financial guarantee would be put in place, or something like that.
What he said.
Yep.
That's a revised. Sorry. Signed to.
Yeah.
So as, as.
As stated by Brian's.
Okay, then I will second that. So do we need to?
I'm just trying to put her.
Can you guys?
And it's just noted for the record, the, the owner, the ownership is here.
Yeah.
He understands and accepts the, the terms and conditions, so.
I'll have to get that plan to put the amendment on it and have you guys sign it next month.
Okay, okay. And by then they may submit, so.
Right.
That's one that. A submission thing. Yeah.
The deadline for the, uh, you know, meeting is October twenty.
October twenty?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, your chair, if I can, just, just to clarify, what just happened is essentially the commission took back up the approval from twenty-one.
Right.
And modified it to give you to the end of this year, twenty-two, to make application to amend that architectural approval.
Right.
For the facade. If you can't, you'll need to enter into a development agreement post a financial guarantee to ensure that that original approval is, um, constructed within a certain amount of time. But, uh, that's what we just did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Paul Byrne.
All right, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.